I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Switchy?
Here.
Mr. McGurven?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, I'll...
Thank you. I'd like to advise the audience that we're having computer problems, that everything is down, so there will be no presentations that require a computer. So we got a couple good, really good, important presentations, however, now they're going to be done without the help of electronics. Isn't it? We're going to be old-fashioned tonight. You know, you get the oldest guy on the council here. It's going to be an old-fashioned council meeting tonight, so let's have some fun.
Regular talk.
With that, we have a proclamation?
Yep.
Okay, this proclamation is regarding National Mentoring Month. Whereas our success as a community depends on helping every child succeed in school and reach their full potential in life, and we realize that young people need a solid foundation of support to help them become well-educated, confident, and productive citizens. And whereas communities and schools is the only dropout prevention program in the nation proven to increase graduation rates, and this research shows that mentoring has beneficial and long-term effects on youth by increasing their chances of high school graduation and college attendance, and decreasing the likelihood of substance abuse and other risky behaviors. And whereas thousands of Renton children, Renton's children are in need of a caring adult mentor in their lives, and closing this mentoring gap will require more investment partnerships and volunteers ready to make a difference in a child's life. And whereas National Mentoring Month is an opportunity to raise public awareness of the importance of mentoring, recognize the dedicated individuals who serve as mentors, and encourage more citizens to help build a brighter future for Renton's youth through mentoring. And whereas the core values of communities and schools of Renton are equity, opportunity, and collaboration, and they are in schools to remove barriers, create opportunities, and help kids stay in school. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of City of Renton, do hereby proclaim January 2019 to be National Mentoring Month in the City of Renton, and in tribute to the many dedicated individuals who volunteer their time, compassion, and talents to mentor young people, and I encourage all citizens to join me in this special observance and to consider giving back to our community as mentors. In witness whereof, I have herein too set my hand and cause the sealed, the City of Renton, to be affixed this 14th day of January 2019, and this is signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor? Ms. Switchy?
I move that the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamation passed, and is there...I don't have the proclamation. We have fun with the CS, the communities and schools? Do accept it? Would like to say a few words?
We would just like to say thank you so much to the City of Renton for your continued support over the years of the mentor program. This year, we are up to 120 students that are, 122 students that are being mentored this year, which I think last year we ended around like 96. So we are continuing to work on increasing those numbers. And anyone can start mentoring at any time during the school year. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. And with that, we have a special presentation by the police department. And they spend a lot of time doing this electronically, and we're going to see how good they can do it without that stuff. Chief?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Council. She's got some screenshots I think she's going to try and download on the computer, see if that works. But we're here to talk about the Take Me Home program, but more importantly, the camera registration program. And it's nice to kind of sit, come up and introduce somebody to you that does amazing work and really makes the police department what it is, successful, where I can sit back and just kind of watch. So the screenshots that she's going to bring up are in relation to the camera registration program, and she's, all of our information is online, so we're not going to do that. You can imagine the internet working. That'll be the best for us. All right. Without further ado, Cindy Parks.
Thank you. Thanks, Council, for inviting me out here. For those of you who don't know me, Cindy Parks, I'm with the Renton Police Department. And part of this presentation is just to go over the camera registration program just a little bit, since it's brand-new. This was a work in progress for a couple of years. When I first heard about it at a meeting, I thought, hey, that sounds like a great idea, because that would save our officers if there's a dynamic situation going on, countless man-hours, that typically is spent physically looking for signs or evidence of cameras installed outside a home as they're walking around canvassing the neighborhood. If we could turn this into a mapping system, so the information that would be gathered via a registration form could auto-populate onto a GIS map of the city. So I contacted IT, and by way of Gary Del Rosario, sorry, and Kevin Trenn, said, hey, I would like to do this, and they said, that doesn't even exist. But don't give up, let's keep talking about this. And eventually they said, hey, I think we can build this. So if it wasn't for them, this wouldn't have happened. So they made my dream a reality. And so what it is, is folks can go on to the city's website at the extension up here. They fill out the information on exterior cameras, and really, it's just statistical information. So what their name is, a contact phone number, some information about their cameras, as far as placement on the outside, left corner, facing South Grady Way is fine, and then how long that video footage is available. So really, officers have always seen a camera, gone up to a front door, cold-called, see if anybody's home, and then requested that the homeowner check their footage, maybe for a certain time period, certain date, to see if they possibly had anything of evidentiary value. This just saves a lot of time, where they can go into the mapping system that's only available to police personnel. And this just gives you a quick little shot about what that looks like. I put a faux registration on there, excuse me. And the officers go on to SharePoint, which is our city platform, and they type in an address or search through the map. I put in City Hall here. A marker will be placed on the map showing where a camera's registered. When they click on it, it's going to pull up the registration information right in front of them. So this just got pushed out, I think it was the second week in December. We are rounding the corner of 125 cameras that are currently registered. There isn't another department in the state that has any sort of program built like this. And it is for exterior cameras only. We can't tap into their system, we're not asking to do that. If we make contact with the folks that voluntarily registered in this program, if they don't want to give us footage, we're not going to force them to give us footage. It's really just an opportunity to get citizens involved in a crime prevention program, which they've been more than happy to do by the looks of it. And it's going to save a lot of investigation hours in the event there's a dynamic situation that happens in the city. Does that make sense? So we've only had this up and running for a month, but it seems to be pretty popular so far. Do you guys have any questions at all?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, Ms. Parks, would, if somebody has cameras on their property that are, that are just looking into their own yard, their own sort of private space, would you also be interested in those?
Well, we could be. I mean, you never know when an incident happens, for example, if we felt somebody was on foot, and they fled down a certain street, it could possibly capture video footage where they crossed over a yard, I suppose. Really, we give the opportunity to the camera owner to take a look at their footage, to see if they have anything that would be possibly of evidentiary value. If they invite us to look at it with them, we're happy to do that, too. But it's really about reaching out to them, saying, hey, could you take a peek? This is kind of what we're looking for within this timeframe.
Thanks.
Right, Mayor?
Yes, so I, when I, when this first came out, I thought it was interesting. I have a couple exterior-facing cameras, and thought it would be a good thing to register. And then I wasn't sure if it would be helpful for that exact same reason, because I wasn't sure they'd be pointing in an area that would be, and not knowing, of course, where someone would cross in order to trigger the motion detection, right? Because that's the issue, they're not running necessarily all the time. But if I heard you correctly, registering could be helpful in terms of canvassing, because you're telling me an officer may see that camera outside, and now I have saved that time from them having to go investigate further.
Correct. And we don't know either. I mean, the great thing about this, too, that I loved about the way they built this for me on the GIS mapping, is the officer can go in, you know, zoom in to where this incident happened, and decide by looking at the camera information, is it facing a direction that he thinks would be helpful to? Does he have enough information in that moment to know whether or not they can contact that homeowner, just have them take a look? Because we don't know either necessarily if we're just really creating information for an investigation, whether or not you would. But to be able to reach out in that moment to inquire is really that huge time saver. And that's why I absolutely encourage folks, even if you feel like it's a very limited space, at least register. And that way, in the event we would want to take a look or have you take a look, we'd at least have your immediate contact information. Because sometimes if we go and make contact, let's say at a convenience store, and there's video footage or video cameras, the person that's working at the time doesn't always necessarily know how to run that, let alone try to assist us in looking at the footage themselves or with us there. And that could be for an emergency in that moment. So it's great to have the person that's responsible for that equipment register, because then they typically will know how to run it, or at least how to look at it for us. So it's going to save us an immense amount of time, I think.
Excuse me, Cindy. Now, can the officers access the camera information from their patrol cars?
They can look at the map.
They can look at the map and see where...
Yeah, anytime that they have internet connection, Wi-Fi connection, they can go on to SharePoint, and yes, they would. Because again, typically, in years past, they went ahead and did this. They just started walking as they're canvassing through the neighborhood to see if there was a camera installed outside, and then they would go and make contact at the house. This just kind of hopefully makes it a little narrower of a focus with an immediate contact information versus trying to chase that homeowner down. So absolutely, they can access this, no matter where they're at.
Any other questions? You know, I want to say thank you, a big thank you to you, Cindy. I happen to work with her for many years, and she's a fantastic person and always has these wonderful ideas. But this is really, really important to us as citizens, because if you look nationwide, how many crimes and major crimes have been solved because somebody had a camera and on their house, and it got recorded, and they were able to go back and get that information. I know of two particular incidences here, and I don't want to go into them, where we were able to solve major crimes and put the person in jail within hours of a couple really drastic crimes, because we were able to do just what the officers did. They said, oh, that person or that business has a camera, and then they went to the next one, and they were able to track the person. And so it's very important. I would encourage all our citizens to participate in this. And there's, you know, like Cindy, I think, explained it so well, we can't access that information. We don't want to. You need to access it and tell us, and then let us look at it as necessary.
All voluntary.
And as to, even the ones in the backyards, I don't know how many people watch the, on your computers next door, and how many people say, oh, somebody was, I heard something in my backyard, or somebody was in my backyard. And all of a sudden, they got it, we got a picture of somebody that the officers were chasing for a crime someplace else. So you just never know when it will be very, very important. And sometimes, the most minor little thing that you don't think of solves a big, major case, so...
And if I could add just one more thing real quick, I have, I have yet to be turned down by any citizen, really, that wants to do something about deterring criminal activity where they live or work, play. I mean, they all want a piece of being involved. I knew that citizens were going to like this. I've been asked about it kind of on and off, whether or not we had anything like it. I just wanted to improve upon, you know, the existing format. But I was surprised how well it took off. But I think that, to be honest with you, is just a huge reflection of how much citizens do want to get involved, and they do want to work in a collaborative way with their city and with their police department. And they've been all over this. In fact, other departments are being reminded about what my citizens are doing. So I've been contacted quite a few times, you know, outside the city, because they understand the value of this, and it's a piece that citizens can become involved in, which I think is the best part, so. Did you guys want me to touch on Take Me Home?
No more questions on this? So we're on the Take Me Home. Are you that, too?
Yeah, I can. I would normally bring up the website. And I don't bring up a snapshot of the database, because that's an immediate reflection of somebody's personal information, because it's only accessible by the police department. But just to give you an idea, you guys have brochures up there, I believe. Take Me Home, I also pushed out in 2018. And again, it was kind of a baby project of mine. I have a person in my life that I thought could benefit. And again, it was something that I had heard about a few years ago, that I really wanted to offer to our city, but we didn't have the IT component. It didn't exist. So I went to Debbie Scott, bless her, who's with our IT department, and I said, this is what I'd really like to have, can you build it? And she was really open-minded and said, well, we don't have it right now, but I'm going to see what I can do. And she didn't turn me away. She kept with my vision. And what she did is, in conjunction with a database, what she did was allow this to be placed on our SharePoint platform. What it is, it's a registration program for folks who would have difficulty identifying who they are or where they live to an emergency responder, in the event they were in distress and needed to get home. For example, the person in my life, he could tell you his name all day long, his first name. And he's very chatty, so you don't call him non-verbal. But he wouldn't be able to articulate his last name, his mother's name, due to his autism spectrum level that he's on. So this really hit home with me, and I wanted to provide an opportunity for folks who lived in and outside the city to register the loved ones in their life who might possibly elope or leave home and maybe not be able to get themselves back to where they could register with us. So that would include a picture and just some personal information, so we know who they are, where they live, who to contact in the event we came into contact with them. If a first responder comes into contact with them, or if a passerby, we certainly get plenty of calls of little ones eloping, or maybe folks that are suffering from early onset dementia or Alzheimer's. Maybe they're perfectly cognizant when they leave the house, but then when they get to their appointment, they don't necessarily remember how to get themselves back or where they live. And that can be a really scary thing for those that we love. And so what they can do is they register in this program via the city's website again. And it's a database that only police personnel have access to. So let's say a first responder comes into contact with somebody who seems to be in distress, but they can't articulate who they are or where to take them to. They can look into this database. They can either scroll through their records, or they can search by hair color, or, for example, the person in my life loves John Deere, loves John Deere tractors, always going to wear be somewhere in something John Deere. So you could even type in John Deere, and it will narrow those records down. That way, you're not searching through all the blondes, or all the blondes and blue eyes. You can really narrow the focus. And then when the officers open that record, they see their full name, who their emergency contact people are, where they're supposed to be living, even more importantly, if there's any medical needs that might have to be addressed within that contact as well. And there's little, there's two little tokens they can wear that I offer them. One is just a little light that's, that can slip on anything, a backpack or what have you. Because in the event, maybe even they venture outside our city, it's a first responder someplace else, either a rubber little silicone bracelet or this little light, and on it, it says Renton PD, Take Me Home. So in the event, they see this little token, they could go, oh, well, I think I'll call the Renton Police Department. Then that officer on duty can check our records to try to get that person back to where they need to be as well. So any questions about that? Great.
Any questions? Again, thank you so very much. That was better than having it on TV.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the next thing is a public meeting on the bill annexation.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Angie Mathias. I'm a planner here with the city, and I managed to get my PowerPoint saved on my jump drive before the whole system went down. So I just got lucky today. So this is a meeting regarding the bill annexation that has been proposed. It's the 10% notice of intent. So this is very early on in the annexation process. The petitioner has submitted their, that 10% petition to the city clerk's office, and now we are here meeting with you. So the state law requires us to hold this public meeting for you all to accept, reject, or geographically modify the proposed annexation. If you do accept the proposed annexation, you would authorize the 60% direct petition to annex. So by way of location, it's in the east plateau area, approximately here. And it's just a few parcels. I'll have an aerial shot here in a minute for you to see a little bit better. That picture was not very clear. It's about seven and a half acres in size. Its current uses are single-family and vacant. Boundaries are a parcel line to the north that's near approximately southeast Third Place. To the east, 154th Avenue Southeast. To the south, another parcel line, it would be at southeast 139th if it was extended, and to the west, at 152nd Avenue Southeast. So here's an aerial. You can see the parcel lines and then the right-of-ways that are there. Existing conditions, so this area has no regulated streams or wetlands or regulated slopes within the annexation area. It does have a very small pocket of 15 to 25% slopes there, but that's the only environmental conditions. Public services, if the area were to annex, it would continue to be served by the Renton Fire Authority and by the Water District 90 for Water. It's also in our Renton Sewer Service Area, although they do not, only one property has sewer currently. And it is in the Renton School District, that would not change upon annexation. Currently, in the county, the area is zoned with R4, and they have it designated in their comprehensive plan as urban residential medium, allowing for a range between four to 12 dwelling units per acre, and they have just zoned it with the R4. We have it designated in our comprehensive plan as residential low density. That allows for a range between resource conservation, R1 or R4 zoning. We pre-zoned this area in 2007 with R4, and so if it does come into the city, that zoning becomes effective upon annexation. We always look at our annexation policies. Our comprehensive plan calls for us to promote annexation where and when it's in our best interests, to support annexation where infrastructure and services allow for urban densities, and it would consolidate service providers or facilitate the efficient delivery of services, and that we consider the fiscal impacts for each annexation. So we also look at the boundary review board criteria and objectives. If this annexation moves forward, that's one of the steps in the process, is to send it to the King County Boundary Review Board and get their clearance to go ahead and proceed with the annexation. So we look and make sure that their objectives are met. One of their objectives is that it use physical boundaries, and this uses parcel lines and roads are considered physical boundaries, prevent annexations that are abnormal in terms of their boundaries. This is a very regular boundary with basically a rectangle. It creates or preserves logical service areas. They are unchanged, and they're previously agreed to. And the annexation is to an area that is urban in character, of which Renton is urban. The fiscal analysis, current conditions are three dwelling units with an estimated eight residents. Future conditions, it's estimated that there's the potential capacity to accommodate an additional 20 dwelling units with an additional 56 residents. We always assume that costs increase at about 3.5% annually, and that revenue is 2.5% annually increased, and that increase is limited to sales tax, utility tax, and the franchise fee. So in looking at it currently, revenues are about $6,000, $7,000, with costs at about $5,000. Year 10, if it were to fully build out, revenues are about $58,000, with costs at about $40,000. To the capital and enterprise funds, revenues are about $1,200, with costs at about $600. Year 10, cost, revenues would be about $7,500, with costs at about $6,000. So we always circulate this to all the different departments for them to comment. City staff representing those different functions have reviewed the proposed annexation, and all departments indicated that it's a logical extension of their services and that they had no concerns with the annexation. Another comment that we just received today, actually, is this property owner immediately south here would like to be added to the annexation area so that it can proceed. That is well within your purview this evening to go ahead and consider that and amend that boundary if you so decide. I contacted the proponent, and she also is supportive of this property being added. So in conclusion, the best interests in general welfare of the city are served by this annexation. It's a logical extension of our services. It's consistent with our policies, and it's also consistent with boundary review board criteria. The administration recommends that the boundary go ahead and be amended as requested to include that single parcel to the south. Also, that you all authorize circulation of the 60% direct petition to annex, specifying that property owners accept our zoning and their proportional share of any bonded indebtedness that we have. That's all that I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I have a question. So you pointed out that the county designation for this property is R4, which your slide shows is four to 12 dwelling units per acre, and then the City of Renton proposal would be R4. But our, our R4 is really just four units per acre. Am I remembering that correctly?
Correct. And one of the biggest differences between county and city, our city zoning is that we use net density.
Okay.
So if that area were to have critical areas or something like that, also any right-of-way that comes as part of development, all of that comes out before they get to use the calculable area for what they can build. Whereas in the county, it doesn't matter if half of it's encumbered by critical areas. If it was 10 acres and it said you would get 40 dwelling units, you would get 40 dwelling units, you'd just get it on a half acre.
Okay.
So it can have a very different result, but it looks on the surface like it's the same zoning.
Right, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the council? Any written comments?
No, there are none.
Okay. What's the council's pleasure? Oh, you got to have a move. I don't, Mayor doesn't move.
No, but I was saying, so there's, you have to announce that there is no move.
And there's nobody signed up. I have my, my, I'm his mentor, or he's my mentor or something, keeping me straight up there.
You can just blame the computer, Doc.
You would've been in front of me on a computer, and I wouldn't have had to do that.
Mr. Mayor? I move, and move we close the public hearing.
Second.
They moved in second to close the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to say no? No? Motion passed.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prince?
I move that the council concur in the administration recommendation that we, can you put the, that we amend the annexation boundary as requested, that we authorize circulation of the 60% direct petition to annex, specifying the property owners accept the city zoning and assume their proportional share of the city's bonded indebtedness.
Second.
Moved in second, it's by, moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Switchy. All in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no no's? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next is administrative report.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Good evening. I just have one item. The Mayor's Annual State of the City Address is on January 30th at 8:00 AM at the Renton Pavilion Event Center. Tickets are $25 each, or $200 for a table of eight, and can be purchased by calling 425-430-6616, or by contacting the Mayor's Office. That's all this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. ... Okay, the next item on the agenda is audience comment. And as we call your name, and I most likely will butcher it, I want to be upfront about it. Come to the podium, you have three minutes to speak. And with that, we'll, oh, and say you're, give you your name and your city of...
We have five minutes.
Oh, we have five minutes? The council, no.
Five is fine.
Five is fine, okay. You have five minutes. I read something about three today. So anyway, the first person is, you give your name and city of residence is... The first person is, you give your name and city of residence is. Andrew, Andrew B. from Lake Street. We need you to come up there to the podium.
I'll sit, either way. Andrew Bromund in Renton, B-R-O-M-U-N-D. Here speaking on behalf of the Renton City Comic Con for LTAC funding. I'm on the planning commission. I do mostly the podcast and the restaurant food and beverage outreach with that. We're on our fourth year as an event, and the community has embraced us, and we've found that the city has been either somewhat lacking in supporting us, so we're asking that you help us with some LTAC funding and to speak to how the community has helped us, particularly from my purview in food and beverage and podcasting. Most of the downtown corridor restaurants and bars, in the Landing, in the Highlands, have all supported us through many different ways, either meeting spaces, supporting the Comic Con beer that comes out of Four Generals, another local business right downtown Renton. And that has both helped produce tax dollars for City of Renton, helped produce a feeling of community within the event, and helped really make the event better and stronger and more effective. And the podcasts, I mean, we've had podcasts from Taquilla, the Olympic Peninsula, downtown Seattle, all these people reaching literally thousands of people to speak to this event in Renton that's a big fan favorite. I mean, we've won the Spirit Award in the Renton River Days Parade twice now. So we're involved in the community. We do stormtrooper cleanups. We do many things within the community, and feel like a little support from the city itself would be nice to help move into our fourth year. We're back at Renton Technical College, and it'd be just a great event for that. So looking for your support for that. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to also explain that to the public, LTAC stands for the lodging tax that we pay when you go to, in a hotel. That money by state law, and it was just changed here a few years ago, has a very restrictive use. And the committee that is selected to review applications, and I think they received 17 applications this year, and they're funding 10 that they felt met the all the criteria necessary, and the council can't change that. That's just, that's the way the law is. And the committee is made up of people from the lodging industry, basically, and some city staff. We, the only thing we can do is remove something from the list. We can't add anything to the list, and we can't change any of the dollar figures that were there. So when you hear people talk about LTAC, that's the lodging tax from the city, and that money, like I say, is very, its use is very restricted by state law. So I just want to be sure that everybody knows what the rules are before we get going. So with that, we're gonna try again. Sarah? Servin?
So I'm here for kind of the same reason, just to try to advocate for RenCon. I live in North Renton right now. I work over at the Boeing, so it's easy to work and everything. So I'm not too familiar, I guess, with what the LTAC is able to be used for, but I do know that RenCon is a great convention, and I've run a convention myself before. It's hard to get funding, and it's great that this year it's actually moved back to the Renton Technical College. Last year, it was in Taquilla, but this year it's, and I know that it has a lot of good support in the community and a lot of the local businesses, and a couple, the events are held in Renton after parties and other things, but it brings a lot of people in from the community, and I think it would be great to have the support from the, it can be hard to get funds for it. I think it'd be great to have some support from the council or from funding from the city. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Next is Brian Morris.
My name is Brian Morris, B-R-I-A-N, last name is M-O-R-I-S. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Renton. I'm also newly appointed CEO for Renton City Comic Con. It's come to my attention, I went through the whole LTAC process and sat before some of you in putting this together, and I was disappointed in once again being denied that. My recommendation as a Renton citizen, as a Renton business owner, and a stakeholder in the future of Renton, is that the city fully reconsider to find ways to fund this particular event, because it's an amazing event that is being brought here to Renton. Renton's, and the vision of driving its success and growth is based upon several basic tenets. The avenues of development and change. Some of those forces for change are diversity, education, technology, and economics, the heart of Renton. My suggestion for you today is that Renton Comic Con fulfills all of these avenues of growth and advancements, and I'm gonna take a real, real brief moment just to look really quickly at these. Diversity. This has been championed by Renton at many levels, and it's a hallmark calling card of the city and the local region. If you're looking to invest in an organization or an event that champions the growth in diversity, Renton City Comic Con offers a wide breadth of diversity in its attendees, its vendors, its artists, business associates, and the types of events it holds. Age diversity is present there, because you'll find everything from little kids to grandparents. There's no age barrier when it comes to this. If you're looking for ethnic diversity. It also presents both in attendees and what happens at the convention, you see every color of the human ethnic diversity presence. You'll see cosplay characters portrayed from around the world. You see diversity in the vendors and the artists and the panels presented. And economic diversity is also presented. A random, at this convention pulls in attendees from both the rich and the poor, the well-educated, those at the edge. It pulls in doctors, nurses, firefighters, military personnel, lawyers, food servers, mechanics, delivery personnel, employees from Amazon, as well as the local diner in downtown Renton. Diversity is a calling card of the fandom conventions, and Renton Comic Con leads away. In education, because this is another hallmark card in Renton. We love our education here. Renton City Comic Con is one of the few, if not only the convention, to offer a complete science track in its presentations. We offer panels and workshops from some of the top minds in science, including speakers from NASA, Boeing, Microsoft, Blue Origin, plus leading experts in the field of AI, VR, and robotics. Our goal is to present the science behind the science fiction, plus we engage the local community in this aspect. As can be seen, last year when we had three robotic teams from local high schools all completing at Renton Comic Con, and that was really, really cool to see. In the area of technology, technology is at the forefront of everything we do, and we know that, like with the Landing and with the new hotel and the business complex, technology is a huge part of where we're going in Renton. As mentioned previously, we have complete science track in panels and workshops. We offer the latest in VR technology, in gaming, and now we move forward into esports and online streaming, which both are taking Seattle by storm. Seattle's on the verge of becoming the technology leader in both esports and online streaming, and we are positioning ourselves to be a driving force in that area. And this is the big one, economics, because this is what drives so much of LTAC funding, is heads in beds, feets on the streets. Where are we getting our money, and how are we drawing people into the community that are gonna spend their money within our community? What might, it's no secret that these fandom conventions are a growing trend, but what might not be as obvious is that many of the financial trends that follows, that alone is a big deal. In 2006, the Pugilist Town Business Journal published an article of the top 25 ranking convention shows and trade shows in Seattle. The event that holds first place, a fandom convention, PAX. They outperform medical and corporate events by about double their impact to a tune of $35.4 million in revenue generated for the city of Seattle. Why is this important? It's because this is where the heart of RenCon is. We put in, last year, we had about 2,000 people in attendance, and we had about 200. That's in heads and beds. That's a 10%. If you multiply that out, in a few years, and we're hitting 5,000, that's 500, that's more people than you can put down at the Landing. And each one of those tickets that we sell is also taxable. So I, I just want to encourage you, if not this round, the next round, that you guys would seriously look at the amazing impact that Renton City Comic Con is having on the city of Renton. Thank you very much for your time.
Jennifer Skelton. Bob, could you help her with the microphone?
Not sure where the best place for me to be is.
There's probably good.
Work. Thank you so much. Thank you, yeah, I appreciate it. Hello, my name is Jennifer Marie Urban Skelton, last name is S-K-E-L-T-O-N. I reside in the city of Kent. I do spend a lot of time out here in Renton, though, and I've lived out here in the last 15 years a couple of times. I too am here to discuss Renton City Comic Convention. I do understand that in the sense of the LTAC funds, that may not be on the table, but I do want to speak, just so you understand how important this is to a number of us. And I'm here to present my opinions on why you should support this convention, you know, in the future, if you're able to. It could be that such a gathering is perhaps lost on those that aren't acquainted with, for lack of a better term, geek culture. Perhaps an event is still perceived as the enjoyment of only fringe cultures at best. What I'd like to proffer instead is, the idea of such an event offers more than merely costume revelry and spectacle for lovers of comic books and science fiction, but an opportunity for traditional artists, writers, costumers, makeup and hair designers, and media professionals of all sorts, from actors to prop makers, to gather and share not only their love of numerous genres of pop culture, but also an opportunity, and a much needed opportunity, in my opinion, for human interaction that's sorely lacking in today's world. Renton City can be a home for this, and we have tried to make it so, but have done so sans assistance from the city thus far. We've done it for the love alone. We love our craft. We love our culture. We love our community, and despite being repeatedly passed over for any funding, we love this city. Perhaps you say this is a niche, singular event, bound only to cater to the smallest fraction of society, but I say you're not paying attention. San Diego boasts one of the world's largest and most lucrative events of this nature. Tickets are highly coveted, and the influx of tourism skyrockets each year because of this. Even here in Washington, the Seattle State Convention Center can scarcely contain the sprawling and ever-expanding Emerald City Comic Con and the Penny Arcade Expo, otherwise known as PAX, and for the amount of guests that attend. People from all walks of life are attending these. I myself am a disabled mother, and I attend because, yeah, I love comics and I love sci-fi, but more so because it gave me an opportunity to be more than my disability. It gave me a platform to use my skills as an actor, as a makeup designer, and a jewelry designer, and to be more than the sad shell that I am day-to-day. And over time, it gave me the courage to become a speaker at these events, to help others and share my story, and to help them bolster their own courage to be more. You do your community and your coffers extreme disservice to reject this event, any sort of financial support. These events gain popularity at an ever-increasing rate, flooding hotels, employing restaurants to maximum capacity, and enticing non-residents to flock to the area, making it more than just merely financially beneficial. It creates a place of happiness, inclusiveness, and a much-needed bastion of human interaction away from phones and computer screens. Our world is lacking this, and supporting this can mean supporting the best of humanity. At a Comic Con, no one cares how you vote. They don't care how you worship, how you love, how much money you make, and how you choose to live your life, or in my case, if your body works all the time. Here, you get to be the person you always wanted to be, always wished you could be, no matter how fanciful and how off the wall, and you will be embraced for that. I think it's about time that we supported more events that supported this, because we are, they are woefully few and far between. I hope this helps you aid in any decision you might make to support this in the future, because our world right now is full of so much negativity and sorrow and sadness, and we desperately need more of these events where we can come together as human beings, share what we love, and embrace something together as a community. And this event that they have put together the last few years has been one of the things that my family looks forward to every year, and it is a joy, and we love coming to Renton to do it. So that's all I really wanted to say on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Ben Andrews.
Hi, my name's Ben Andrews, last name Andrews, A-N-D-R-E-W-S, and I am a citizen of Renton. Why do I have to go after her? That's bull. I actually had all these notes, and thank you, guys. Now my notes mean nothing, because you've kind of said a whole lot of it. So just, it's okay. I'll recover. I can do it. Just on a sincere note, I have been involved civically in this community the last four years, pretty heavily. I've gotten to know a lot of you. Before I was involved, I was easily that cliche citizen who had no skin in the game, but was entitled enough to talk plenty of trash or criticize, and I just want you guys to know, this is something I've wanted to get off my chest for a long time, is in the last four years of seeing what you guys do, I've found out the truth. And the truth is that you sacrifice. You sacrifice time from your children, from your family, your friends, and from your personal endeavors. I see that, I respect it, and I acknowledge it, and so thank you for your service. Now, as you already know, I'm here to talk about RenCon, and for the record, I'm an employee of the Rent Chamber of Commerce, but I am by no means representing that organization tonight. I'm gonna cut through some of this stuff. As you can tell, RenCon is a community design event based around the geek culture. And when we say geek culture, that's just people that love everything, science fiction, fantasy, music, movies, comic books, but they also love technology. They love to talk about space travel, and this event, over the last three years, has brought representatives from NASA, Boeing, Blue Origin, and SpaceX. So this is not, when we say geek culture, not the unemployed guy in his parents' bedroom, you know, making costumes. Now, from the community perspective, RenCon from the core has been about being in the community. We're at the golf tournaments, we're at the car shows, we're at the Renton River Days. So this is grassroots event built by citizens from Renton, for citizens of Renton. Now, I just want to get to an important point, which is, in 2018, we did not receive the LTAC funds, and we went over to Taquilla to have our event. But our involvement in the Renton community for 2018, I believe, was unprecedented. And there's just a quick list, you've heard of some of these things. We were at Renton River Days and the parade. We won for the second year in a row the Spirit of Renton Award. We brought cosplayers to the Return to Renton Car Show. We collaborated with the Renton Regional Fire Authority and the Police Department to film their lip sync video. We had three stormtrooper downtown cleanups. We supported the Renton Downtown Partnership in at least three events. We filmed collaboration, in collaboration with local businesses, the Renton Police, and the Chamber, several promotional videos. And let me be clear, our event was not in Renton. It was in Taquilla, but we maintained keeping involved here in Renton. So I'm not, personally, I'm not certain why RenCon continues to go unfunded. I do know that the letter of the law for LTAC kind of hits four main points: heads in beds, promotion of the city, economic value for the city, and also a provision of unique services. So we, as a planning commission, we feel that we've hit all four of those consistently. But that being said, I have this feeling like perhaps the county. But that being said, I have this feeling like, perhaps the council or, or the city thinks that, you know, we're these swashbuckler businessmen coming in and making a ton of money. To be clear, I'm just gonna be very candid about some of our financials. I, along with two other, at least two other people, have accrued a lot of personal debt to make this event happen. Now, does that mean we're poor business people? Well, it possibly can. But here's four things I want you to think about. For all the years of Renton, we have not charged for children ten and younger. In 2018, that was over a thousand children. Lost revenue. For all those community events that I just spoke about, we bring cosplayers, and we incentivize them to come and be a part of our community events by giving them free passes to Renton. Lost revenue. All those community events, we give tons of tickets away. We give VIP tickets away in our raffles. Lost revenues. And as far as all those promotional videos, we charged Taquilla $10,000 for one promotional video. In the history of Renton, all the promotional videos in Renton, we've never charged a thing.
Ben, your time is up.
Thank you, sir.
I think the next one is Amir.
I hope I get an applause too, at the end. My name is Amir Faharzad, I live in Kent, uh, but our family business is in Renton, and we have three generations that are involved with our rental houses and apartment buildings. I'm here to speak about the RIO Residential Rental Inspection Ordinance. I know it's not tonight on topic. It's gonna come up soon. Last month, you had a hearing on it. I didn't have a chance to be here to speak on that behalf, but I wanted you to know my feelings about it as you consider the regulations and, uh, the, what you plan for it, as, uh, we have a love and involvement for, with this city, and have always been good citizens of this community in terms of supporting its efforts. Uh, primarily focused on housing, affordable housing. To give you a perspective on what we have for rental housing here, we own houses and apartment buildings that range in rents as low as $695 for a one-bedroom apartment, uh, and we have even, uh, two-bedroom apartments around a thousand dollars a month. We have one-bedroom, excuse me, two-bedroom apartments that are ranging anywhere as, excuse, two-bedroom houses, excuse me, ranging as low as $895 to as high as $1,500, depending on the size and suite. So, you know, we're at the low end of the scale. We have tenants who've stayed with us, can you believe it, twenty, thirty, forty years? Because we afford, we have a good quality product, and no, we're not slum lords. We take care of our place, we're very OCD about it, we have three generations of the family involved, my father, my brother, myself, and my son is involved with the business. Uh, we take care of everything, we have a good product, our rents are low, we're not rent gougers. We have a property in Seattle that's subject to the RIO that they have in Seattle. And Seattle started out with a very simple program, basic program, but guess what? They're raising the fees, they're raising the regulations, and making it more and more onerous. And that's kind of the benchmark, I mean, you guys Rentonists considering it, well, Seattle has it, you know, now maybe Renton. And my concern is that, uh, that, you know, a program like this could lead to more regulations in the future, making it harder for us to operate affordably for our tenants and the fees as well. So I ask that when you're considering this, look at, uh, the smaller landlords, you know, look at the people who, you know, who have smaller properties. We're not a big corporation that has multiple, you know, uh, buildings that are big, hundred-plus units and so forth, and, uh, I would hope that you would consider that, uh, in your deliberations, as that's very important to us, to preserve the quality of housing in this community, but at the same time, to make it affordable as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Rose Skelton.
Hello.
Hi.
Okay, so, um, good evening, um, my name is Rose Skelton, um, and I'm here to speak to you about Renton City Comic Con and the funding for it. Um, so, I fully comprehend that I am a kid, and what I say might not really have an effect on, you know, the overall verdict, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Though it may not seem like much, um, cosplay is a very important part of my life, um, for I'm a type one diabetic, and, um, I've always been, well, a geek, um, but it wasn't until after I was diagnosed that I first started cosplay. Um, and dressing up as like, strong characters made me feel like I was strong, and made being sick a lot easier. And, um, recently, I've been speaking at a panel with my mom, Jenny Skelton, who just spoke a little bit ago, um, and we recently spoke at Renton City Comic Con, and I got to tell people what it was like, speaking, like, I got to speak to people about what it was like, you know, being sick and cosplaying with it, and it made everything a bit easier, and we got to speak to other people who, you know, were sick or disabled, and it felt really nice to kind of, you know, help people, or help people understand what it's like to be, to have an illness, really. And even though I look like I'm okay, you know, there's different things that happen with diabetes, and that's, you know, just, that's a fact, and I can't change it, but going to Renton City Comic Con makes, makes things a lot better, you know? I'm really going off of what I wrote, I don't even know why. I wrote like a whole paragraph here, multiple paragraphs, actually, and now I'm just like, going completely off of it. Anyways. Um, duh-duh-duh, I am so lost right now. Uh, okay, so, and I've made a lot of friends going to cons like this, and I look forward to Renton every year, because though it is a smaller con, it's, it's something special, really. Um, and I think that with proper funding and, you know, some help from the city, it could be even more amazing than it already is. Um, and, for lack of a better word, it's, quaintness is something that's really lacking in a lot of cons recently, and people are really, you know, though it is a smaller, y- blech, I cannot talk today. Though it is a smaller, a smaller, mm, a smaller con, people recently have really been looking for cons that are smaller and growing, because people, you know, are dissatisfied with larger cons, because there's just not room, or it's difficult to move around, or, you know, see things that you wanna see, um, so people, I feel like would rather, pe- I don't even feel like, people would rather go to a smaller con that is growing, um, and is not overinflated, rather than go to a giant con where it's just too crowded and it's not really fun because of that, and these small cons, like Renton City Comic Con are a great place for family, friends, and the overall community as a whole, and, like, everybody at these cons are very welcoming, nice, and it's a good, it's a nice change from the giant cons like Emerald City Comic Con and things like that. Um, and everybody there's been really welcoming to me, my family, and it's really great. Um, and I love Renton City Comic Con, and I hope that you lend the funds to make it something very, very special, more than it already is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I got Sam.
Hello, uh, my name is Samantha Getz-Granquist, and I am here on behalf of Renton City Comic Con. Now, some of you may recognize me without the costume. I was a former youth position for the Municipal Arts Commission. I serve UT occasionally at Luther's Table. And I hope this helps to reflect upon the community that I decide to dedicate myself towards. You may also recognize me from the, um, multicultural festival that I participated in for 2017. I dedicate myself to causes because I love Renton. I was born here, at Valley Medical Center, just over the hill. I have lived here for my entire life, just down the street on Wells Avenue. I remember looking up at this building, saying, "I want to make something happen", and this is why I'm here. I have worked with Renton since the beginning, and I do understand that the laws and restrictions in place are difficult. But, support, no matter where it comes from, is important, especially within something so important within ourselves. Now, a lot of people think that the nerd community isn't large, or that we aren't really there, but everyone has something. My father, if you look at him, he is a blue-collar man, he works on fire systems. And he comes home smelling like grime and muck and all these terrible things, but he also sits down in his old NES, and he showed me how to play Super Mario. Everyone has a little bit of something, whether it's a six-year-old loving Spider-Man, or every woman looking up to Wonder Woman. It's something that the community can work towards together, and I feel that by supporting this, you would also be supporting parts of our community who may not always feel welcome. We actually do have an event this weekend called Kick Off the Cons. I was part of the organizing group for that, and it is going to be quite a fun show. We have, uh, special effects artists, such as Tim Pearson, who has worked on shows like Z Nation, and, uh, we have a couple of testimonies, such as ones from Kenneth Calhoun, a, uh, special effects professional down in Hollywood, who has worked on Guardians of the Galaxy, with all of the intricate designs that go on Drax, if you know who I'm speaking of. Uh, he's also a local. And, uh, Renton Comic Con is here because of Renton, and for the love of Renton, and everyone who is here. Um, I hope that whatever you can, you do give, and, um, I would love to welcome you to Kick Off the Cons 2019. We are up at Renton Technical College, so you can get a little bit of a taste of what Renton is going to really be like. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, um, could I ask Samantha if you can come back and give us the time and details about the kickoff, so our audience can have that information?
Of course. So, um, Kick Off the Cons is going to be January 19th, it's a Saturday, from 10:00 AM to fa- 6:00 PM. We are also going to have an after-party for some of our vendors and, uh, some of our attendees. Uh, there are other specifications which you can find on our Facebook page at Renton City Comic Con, or on our actual website, rentoncitycomiccon.com. Uh, you are still able to buy passes online and, uh, at the event. And children, ten and under, are free. Anything else?
It's at Renton Technical College.
It is, up in the I building. Thank you.
The next person is, I think it's Abby, A-B-I-E.
Hello.
Hi.
So it's Ekaneza, just because most people can't pronounce it, just think of Scrooge. I'm not really a Scrooge, though. Okay, glad I didn't have to go after the little girl, because, oh boy. Um, so, hello, my name is Abby Ekaneza, and I help with organizing the volunteers for Renton City Comic Con. Every year, we have a multiple people that want to help with this event. They literally come from all over. We've had people that came from Canada, um, we've had people that came from Portland, just to come and be a part of this event. Last year, because of my convention experiences, um, I was able to bring diverse celebrities from the UK and from Toronto, Canada. I don't know if any of you are interested in Doctor Who, but, huh, but he played most of the monsters, John Davy, um, so he was the Cyberman, the Daleks, he was literally the Doug Jones of the UK, and he was very happy to be here. Uh, the event also reached out to my, uh, diversity filming group, and asked us to be a part of their content creators, um, section at Kick Off the Cons this Saturday. Uh, what our group mainly focuses on is, um, people of color in, uh, entertainment and in film. And so having the chance and the ability to talk to other people, content creators, Twitch people, um, Instagram people, because I don't really do Instagram, I just do it because my niece does it. Um, just to have the ability to do this and like, talk to other people that are out there, and give, send our message, you know, out to other people about, um, showing more diversity and representation, um, in film, is one of, probably one of the most amazing experiences that we'll get to have. Um, we've gotten a chance to be able to present at other events, and the one thing I love about Renton City is that it's, it is smaller, it's more intimate, uh, and you actually have the chance to talk to people, haha, instead of drive-by hugs, which is usually what happens at like, big places like San Diego or Emerald City. Uh, I've actually heard from a lot of people who said that they'd much rather come to Renton City compared to Emerald City, because it's such a high-impact area, and, um, knowing someone like me, I, um, served in the Navy for about nine years, I'm currently reserve, and, um, I get anxiety, you know, especially when there's a lot of people around, so, um, getting the chance to be able to be at a, a nice, more intimate, family-style event like Renton City Comic Con, um, and getting a chance to actually talk to other, um, military veterans uh, that are coming out there just to geek out as crazy as I am, because lord knows I was made fun of for it, uh, it's great, it's awesome. Uh, it's awesome. So, um, finally, uh, I would like to say that this event has meant so much to me with costuming, with getting a chance to talk to other people about comic books. Yes, girls can like comic books, too. And to even, um, get a chance to talk about film and television, like the new Spider-Man, yay. It's been a whirlwind experience being with Renton Comic Con since the start. Uh, my seventeen-year-old, yes, I have a seventeen-year-old. Um, he loves this event, and he talks about it every single time. Unfortunately, he lives in another state, but when he comes back next year, uh, to start university, he one-hundred percent plans on helping out and, um, bringing his friends along. At least he talks to them anytime we do events in the area. Uh, the nice thing is, is with the volunteers, we actually get volunteers from the high schools to come out and come and help, uh, the attendees figure out where they wanna go, what they wanna do, and a lot of the times, they, um, attend the events themselves. And I live in Burien, so when I'm coming to Renton, I'm staying in Renton, so I'm getting a hotel, because their night events are so insane. And so, yes, uh, I, I support Renton, and I hope you do also.
Thank you. Todd.
It's, uh, Todd Conley, currently in Bellevue. Hayeson High School grad, born and raised in Renton, and, uh, would love to spend time here. I had the opportunity, a couple of months ago, to run into Elon Musk at an event, and told him that, uh, Renton needs some tunnels, so. But I don't wanna talk about, uh, RTA or anything like that. Uh, I, I run a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) called highschool.gg, and we facilitate esports in, uh, high schools all around Washington State. We're working closely with the WIA, a stone throw away, and I would love to be able to host a state championship for high school esports in Renton. I was a little shocked when I saw the budget and started interfacing with the Renton City Comic Con at- Comic Con at just the, how immature things were from a RFP perspective when trying to bring my event with between 1,000 and 5,000 high school kids, hopefully more in the 5,000 and, to Renton. If you're not familiar with esports, these are sports that don't involve concussions, primarily played on the computer and consoles or Xbox or PlayStations. And what we do is we take kids that, for the most part, are not participating in a varsity sport in a high school, such as Hazen, Lindbergh, and Renton. And we take them and we put them in teams with coaches, with parent involvement, other student involvement, alumni involvement, and teacher involvement and get them in a fun, organized event. We had a great kickoff, a fall pilot season down in Los Angeles in a school district called Downey, and we're continuing with Compton School District. And we're kicking off statewide in 2019, 2020 in Washington State, just signed the whole state of Idaho as well. And we would love to be able to have one of our fall kickoffs or a state championship event at Renton City Comic Con. They brought us in and had us do a tour of the facility at Renton Technical College and we've looked at the new hotel space down there at the landing. I was also at a conference last week with the Topgolf folks who are building out esports arenas in their Topgolf facilities and really excited about the possibilities of doing that more in the 2021 kind of timeframe. And I'm so glad that Renton's here. I just came to support them, not involved with them on paper or anything like that. But I'm a willing exhibitor and willing to be a part of a great convention and appreciate all the hard work they're doing.
Thank you. Emilio, is that right?
Hello, everybody. My name is Emilio Morales, M-O-R-A-L-E-S, resident of Renton. I actually bought my first home here in Renton, originally from White Center. So I came from the late '90s, early 2000s where you couldn't walk across the park without running for your life. I was, I came here also in a business. I opened DPAD Retro Gamings. I've been an entrepreneur for about eight years. I've been in the industry for over 10. What you guys don't know about, you've heard a lot of wonderful things about our organization, but what you don't know is that we have great people that volunteer all their time. Ben Andrews is an amazing person because he also runs a Film Summit. So we do a lot of educational things and we bring a lot of stuff to Renton. The fear is, what are we going to do? Are we going to grow? Are we going to leave? We don't want to leave. We feel like we're getting pushed out. Our dream was always to stay in Renton. When I first sat with them, I asked them, "Hey, this could get really big with some of our experience. Do we want to get as big as Seattle?" And we all agreed that we wanted to stay in Renton because this is what our home is. This is what we love. So our goal was always to be here, is never to leave. And with Brian, he is a professional cosplayer and builds a lot of beautiful costumes. So with Ben, Brian, and myself, we have the tools. We have the tools to educate the schools. We have the tools to bring the young generation and show them how to properly build a costume, how to properly become an actor, how to properly, instead of going to other organizations that would lead you in the wrong directions, we can properly do that. And it's been great. It's been very hard. We've managed to build relationships with big sponsors. Unfortunately, because we are new and we're in a world where we have to prove ourselves, we're able to do a lot of in-kind trading. You know, it's been a rough road, but we're here. And if you see any of our content, it's professional. And we all, all to our team that donated all their time. Nobody gets paid. Nobody's looking for money. We're just looking for an opportunity to fund this, to continue what we're doing, to provide something wonderful for everyone, whether you're an adult, whether you're a kid, whether you like comics, whether you like movies, whatever you're into, we want to provide that. And that's it. That's all I have to say. And thank you for having me up here.
Thank you. And last but not least, Rachel.
Hello. My name's Rachel Ferlong. I live in Renton. I recently moved here and I've completely fallen in love. I'm also here to advocate for Renton Comic Con because once I found out that we have an event here, I was so ecstatic and excited to get involved. So here to advocate for funding and everything. But I also work at the Smoking Monkey Pizza Place right in downtown. And if anyone has like information on getting involved, I know this is more for like the organizers of the event, but I just wanted to put that out there as well because we're really excited and me especially. The owner's kind of been like, "Well, if you organize it, you can take care of that." So just wanted to come up here and say that and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I think that's all the audience comment, right? Yeah, so somebody was raising their hand. Oh, okay. Then I have a comment I'd like to make. Did you want to ask? Did we want to add?
Go ahead. Come up to the podium and give your name and city where you live.
Good evening. My name is Patience Malaba. I am here on behalf of the Housing Development Consortium.
Would you please spell your name? I don't think.
My last name is M-A-L-A-B-A. B-A like boy. Great. I am the Advocacy Manager at the Housing Development Consortium of Seattle King County. We are an association of the affordable housing community. We have members that amount to 170, working all throughout King County to ensure that people have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes throughout the county. And throughout the years, HDC has worked with cities in South King County towards a formal collaborative that will address issues of affordable housing and homelessness. One of the biggest issues has been the standard of housing in some parts of South King County. And we have advocated for healthy housing. We have worked with cities to ensure that we adopt rental inspection licensing ordinances so that tenants who are lower income and do not have the luxury or disposable income to move out of housing that is substandard are also protected. So we're here tonight to advocate once again for the rental inspection licensing ordinance that you have before you as a proposal to actually move it forward and adopt it. South King County has about 42,700 households who are extremely cost-burdened currently. And if you're looking at those numbers, most of them are earning below 60% area median income. With that, it means you have so many people who are stuck in housing where they do not have a choice to leave. Because if they do raise their issues with their landlords, they find themselves being retaliated on it. So we are calling upon you to protect these tenants and make sure that you're putting in place an ordinance that can help the health of housing and also alleviate any conflicts between landlords and tenants. With that, I would just want to thank you for all of the good work that you have been doing, leading most of King County with your agile reforms, with your waivers on multifamily tax exemptions. We think it's great and you are leading and we appreciate all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Corbin?
And Mr. Mayor? Yeah, so I just wanted to, I appreciate all the comments tonight, actually comments on the housing, but also the Renton comments, which some of them were really touching. And you all did a great job. And I just wanted to make it clear that your comments are falling on receptive ears. Some of you may have seen me at Renton in past years. In fact, one year I was there with my family and I was dressed as Terminator, you might We've loved it. My family, I have five children. They all like conventions. I've got grandchildren now that have gone to these conventions. I've gone to Emerald City Comic Con and Rose City Comic Con and Sakuricon. And my wife goes, she never misses Norwest Con. She's gone for like 17 years in a row to that. So I get it. And we actually talked about this in Committee of the Whole. I was disappointed that the LTAC money didn't land there this year. And I do know that I've gotten hotel rooms when I've gone, you know, even into Seattle. Because one thing that hasn't been mentioned is the hotel rooms are often really important for people doing cosplay because you have costume changes and you need mirrors and things like that. So it is, I mean, it's something that we really embrace and we're really excited about. And there were a lot of restrictions on the LTAC money where it didn't land there, but I don't want anybody to get the idea that we're not supportive or appreciative of all the work that you've done. And I sort of, in the Committee of the Whole, was kind of, along with other council members, challenging the council to keep this in mind and try and figure out other ways that we might be able to help in the future. But so thank you for coming and reminding us why it's important.
I think I have to be next here. So I feel obligated here as the only member of the LTAC committee to kind of address the audience here. And I'd like to start off by saying that the group that gets together to allocate the funds, by state law, it's set up very specifically. It has to be equal amounts of participants from the hotel industry, along with equal amount of participants from organizations that can accept the funds. And it gives a real balance on the board. This is, I think there's eight of us on the board and we give up basically three full days to go through all of the applications and to have the presentations in front of us. So as far as the LTAC or as far as the Renton, the city of Renton is not LTAC. LTAC are dollars that are generated from taxing the hotels and we're just the stewards of that money. And so it's not disingenuous to say that the city's not for Renton. The Renton was granted money in the, I think it was 2017, was 15,000. And then last year, it wasn't. One of the things that we've tried to do is, for any of the groups that weren't able to receive the funds, is try and give them the information of what they would need to do to receive the funds. I know that I'm actually a fan of Renton. I mean, my son is really good friends with Ben Andrews' son Xander and they were at Renton last year. So I think it's a great event and I think that it's a growing event and it has a lot of potential in this community. But there's some challenges and the hoteliers have a responsibility to allocate those funds in the way that they feel is the most appropriate way to do it. So, you know, I'm hoping that this continues to grow and in the future, they will be awarded funds. So I would say not to give up, but to continue to move forward. So I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, well, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda.
No, I don't have any consent.
Does anybody want anything removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that council approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Noes? Seeing none? The consent agenda is adopted. Next is unfinished business. And Committee of the Whole?
Okay, Committee of the Whole has two committee reports. The first one is regarding the City of Renton and Bayless Architects Incorporated Agreement for Family First Community Center. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the agreement for services between the owner, City of Renton, and architect, Bayless Architects, for $1,239,097.05 for the Family First Community Center. And this is signed by Council President Person.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Ritchie?
I move that the Committee of the Whole report be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the Committee of the Whole report. All in favor?
Aye.
No, any noes?
Okay, the second Committee of the Whole report is regarding allocation of lodging tax funding for 2019. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve allocations for the 2019 lodging tax fund as recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee as follows. Renton Chamber of Commerce, operation of tourism organization, $100,000. City of Renton, Renton Community Marketing, $75,000. International Association of Firefighters, Local 864, 2019 Convention, $50,000. Seattle TISI, Sangnam, Sanggam Convention, 2019, $30,000. LTAC Selected Community Event Sponsorships, $20,000. Ravishing Women, Ravishing Women Show, $15,000. Real Renton, Seattle Film Summit, $15,000. City of Renton Multicultural Festival, $10,000. Coalition of Filipino-American Philippine Independence Day, $10,000. Northwest Premier Junior Football and Cheer All-Star Weekend and Jamboree, $7,500. City of Renton Cruise the Loop, $5,000. Renton Downtown Partnership Wine Walks and Ladies Night, $5,000. Total recommendation of $342,500. The Committee further recommends authorization for the mayor and city clerk to execute the contracts with successful applicants to expend budget funds on the proposed additional marketing initiatives. And this is signed by President Don Person.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Ritchie?
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Committee of, Committee of the Whole Committee Report.
Second.
Moved in second to adopt the Committee of the Whole Report. All in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Motion passed. Anything else?
No, that is all.
Mr. Corbin?
I don't have any unfinished business to present today. I do want to state for the benefit of the public, we're still holding that Transportation Committee Report. Since the open house is tomorrow, it wouldn't seem, it wouldn't make sense obviously to act on that tonight. So, which I think was communicated last time, but for anyone who may still be wondering, that's where it's at. But that is all.
Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No unfinished business.
Mr. Pavoni?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Finance has five committee reports.
Okay, the first Finance Committee Report is regarding Parks Recreation and National Areas Plan Update Professional Services Agreement. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to enter into a professional services agreement with MIG Incorporated to complete the six-year update to the Parks Recreation and Natural Areas Plan in the amount of $206,993 and to be funded from the Capital Improvement Fund. The Committee recommends that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pavoni?
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
All in favor of the committee report?
Aye.
I don't see any noes, so the report is passed.
Okay, the second Finance Committee Report is regarding the contract agreement with Davy Resource Group. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the 2019 contract agreement with Davy Resource Group Incorporated in the amount of $139,360 for consulting Certified Arborist Inspector to assist with the Community Services Department Urban Forestry Tree Requests for Service. And this is signed by the committee chairs and members. Chair and member.
Mr. Pavoni?
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, the third Finance Committee Report is regarding the request to increase recreation specialists from .50 FTE to .75 FTE. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the Community Services Department Recreation and Neighborhood Division to increase the current .50 FTE recreation specialist focused on youth athletics to .75 FTE. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Pavoni?
I move the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Moved in second that the councils approve the committee report. All in favor? Any noes?
Okay, the fourth Finance Committee Report is regarding King County Youth and Amateur Sports Grants for the Family First for the Family First Community Center. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the King County Grant Agreement for 55,000 dollars and King County Grant Project for 20,000 dollars for the construction and installation of the Family First Community Center. And this is signed by the chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Boboni?
These are the ones that you like where we're getting money.
Yes.
That's right.
With that, I would uh, I would like the council to concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report. Second.
Moved in second to adopt the committee report? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Any noes? No?
Okay. Nope, there's one more.
One more?
The last Finance Committee Report is regarding the State of Washington Transportation Improvement Board Fuel Tax Grant Agreement for the Duval Avenue Northeast Roadway Improvements Project, Northeast Ninth Street to Northeast Tenth Street. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the State of Washington Transportation Improvement Board Fuel Tax Grant Agreement for 500,000 dollars for the Duval Avenue Northeast Roadway Improvements Project, Northeast Ninth Street to Northeast Tenth Street. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Boboni?
I move that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report. Second.
Moved in second. All in favor to accept the Finance Committee Report?
Aye.
Seeing no noes? Motion's passed. And? Mr. Corbin, any unfinished business?
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince, any unfinished business?
The Planning and Development Committee has one committee report.
This committee report is regarding the Trails and Bicycles Master Plan Update. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation, Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt and update to the Trails and Bicycles Master Plan and recommends that a resolution adopting the update be prepared and present, presented for first reading when it is completed. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prince?
I move that the council concur in the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee.
Second.
Moved in second to accept the recommendation of the Planning and Development Committee? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
No noes? Motion passed. Next is new business. Ms. Witche?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On January 21st, we will have no meetings in recognition of the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday. And on Monday, January 28th, the Committee of the Whole is canceled, and that is all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McEvin?
Uh, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Perez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Utilities Committee will meet on January 28th at 6 o'clock in the council conference room. There are four items in the agenda. Southeast 172nd Street Stormwater Grant, Heather Downs Project Agreement, 16th and Jefferson Stormwater Agreement, and emerging issues in utilities. That will be it.
Mr. Boboni?
Uh, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbin?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The uh, Planning and Development Committee has a committee meeting on January 28th at 5:00 PM. We have, uh, in the council conference room, we have four items on the agenda. Recreation uses in the UC Zone, emergent issues in CED, 2019 CED Work Program, Shoreline Master Plant Update. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
I wanna say thank you to everybody for bearing with me all evening. It's been an enjoyable evening. I, I promise a shorter meeting if I ever do this again.
Famous last word.
And with that, what is the?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Moved in second that we adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Goodbye, goodnight, stuff like that.